Good folks, let's call the meeting to order, planning and zoning, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Do the roll call, please, Paul.
Megan. Brian. Brooks. Rob. Alyssa. Michael. Barb.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Um, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Basset, I'll motion to approve.
I'd bring second.
A motion second to approve the agenda, all in favor?
Uh, the only thing I'd say is, um, is number seven, is that removed?
We will keep it on the applic- we'll need some kind of formal action to close out the file, that's why it's still on the agenda.
Sounds good.
Okay, motion second to approve the agenda, all in favor? Opposed, alright. Motion carries, we've got the consent calendar, we've got a couple of plaits on the consent calendar.
Just for the record, Brooks has arrived.
I'd bring, make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Shawn and second.
Motion second to approve the consent calendar, all in favor? Opposed? I really appreciate your using your microphones because, um, I was watching city council the other night trying to look at that appeal. And it was a real challenge, so I'm going to be the microphone czar at city council because I couldn't hear half of it. And it was important.
Yeah, and I noticed too, not only even if people had their microphone on, if they turned their head like this, didn't pick up.
Yep.
You gotta talk right into it.
So, I appreciate that, folks. Okay, we've got minutes on page seven and eight, Alyssa, did you see anything that we need to correct on the minutes?
I see motion, I will, I move to approve the minutes. Alyssa.
She is our proofreader.
Tote second.
Got a motion and second to approve the minutes, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, public comments. So this is a time for, uh, public comments, if anyone is in the audience, I would like to address the commission on anything. We, um, ask you to come forward, state your name and address, and you've got five minutes. Anybody have anything to address? Seeing no motion, we'll go on to item number seven, Patrick.
So, a while back, you all heard a home occupation permit application for five oh four North Teton Drive. You voted to deny, it went up to the city council, they sent it back to you for reconsideration. We have heard from the applicant, she has requested to withdraw her application because she has found a commercial space up on Holly Boulevard. So, just to close out the file, we will need a an acceptance of the withdrawal.
Before we do that, I, I just want to make a couple of comments for the record here, I was, um, I listened to the appeal, I listened to the videotape twice, I lis- went back and listened to ours twice. And I was concerned there was a lot of false comments made at council meeting. And there was also a lot of new information presented that I thought was maybe a little unfair to both, both parties. So I guess I would maybe make a suggestion to, um, administration that we set some policies in place to prevent new information from being presented, different information being presented to an appeal than what was presented to us. Some examples were, um, she was very hesitant about um, doing it by appointment, but yet she was very open to city council about that. She told us six to eight people, she told city council four to five. So, just a lot of different information, um, so. Also, she made some comments about Rob and myself that were, were not true, I never, I never once brought up the, the firearm retail application, I was aware of it, it was in my mind. I just simply asked a question, have we approved a, a retail conditional use, I asked the city, and Patrick's response included the reference to that, but she made it sound like we, like we came to the, to the table totally against it, from, from the get-go. So, anyway, I just would suggest that city maybe set some procedures in place for appeals when they, when they come to council, so that we're not getting new, different and conflicting information.
And maybe one thing to add to that, um, I'm sure the city councils like ourselves, you try to look at the agenda and the packet before, but sometimes there's meetings where you come in. If there's a, an appeal from us to the city council, is there a way to uh, maybe send out a, you know, red flag to the city council so they can have a, a second to review the meeting? Cause that could bring a lot of context to them too, and I, I'm sure that they try, and like all of us, we're busy, um, but if there could be a, especially when it's an appeal that wouldn't normally go to them, but it's only going to them because, um, they don't agree with us specifically, if that could be kind of a, an extra flag to the city council.
So Barb can provide some information there, but the Thursdays before city council meetings, they have a briefing meeting, that's we, we basically go through what's on the agenda, not, you know, how they're gonna vote or anything like that, but just kind of the topics are on the agenda, this is what it is. And at those, we do, if there is something coming up, mention that it is recommended you watch the video, obviously I can't make them watch the video, but it's recommended they watch the video and look at the minutes and, and everything else before the appeal comes to them.
And I do think some of them do watch the video, unfortunately, I missed that meeting at city council, so I wasn't able to speak up. I don't, you know, I think if we have, um, some challenging issues, it, it might not hurt, and I don't know if we can do this protocol wise, it might not hurt for someone from P and Z to come to council and explain our position, I don't think that would be me, cause I'm sitting on council. Um, but that might be something that we consider down the road, um, as it, just as an idea, I don't know, but.
I think there's been a couple instances in the past where someone from this commission went to the city council for such thing, it's not been all the time, and I, I was thinking about that in retrospect too, that I wish I would have been there, I think, I think I did know, I think Patrick mentioned it cause we had a s- meeting in between, I think, so that's on me, but anyway, I, I thought about that, that I could go, I can't probably speak for the commission, but I could go share my own thoughts.
So are you looking, um, and then I have a comment after that, but are you, what are you looking for us to do?
I'm just looking for a motion to accept the withdrawal.
Tote's so moved.
Noam second.
Okay, we've got a motion and second to withdraw the home occupation permit, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? So my question is, um, you know, we've had a couple of these just recently, but in general, how, how many of these home retail type business requests do we get? I mean, is it enough that we need to re-look at our ordinance, or is it just kind of like, it's just been a couple recently and it's just in back of my mind?
I guess, I'll probably speak, cause I've been on, of the current people here, I've been here the longest. Um, I can only recall a couple, the firearm one, and then, and then this one, but, um, so this is just me and my, my opinion only, and there are six of us, and, and that's why we have six of us, is to get six different ideas, but, um, my, my concern with retail and residential, and I, I've said it before, is, is traffic and parking. You know, especially, you know, I, I know in her mind, in, in the applicant's mind, um, she was doing it nights and weekends. Well, to me, that's, that's almost the worst time to do it, because that's when we're all, well, I shouldn't say we're all, some people work nights, nurses and stuff, I'm sorry if I offended anybody, but that's when the most, most of the, the majority of the people are home. That's when our kids are home, that's when our friends come over, that's when we go over to our friend's house. And the last thing we want to do is come home from work and we can't park in front of our house, or we have to fight traffic or something, and so that to me is the benefit of a service provider in a residential neighborhood versus retail is, uh, those are typically daytime, uh, uses. And so they're gonna be there from, you know, nine to five, or eight to four, or whatever, while the majority of the people are, are gone working, and so the impact to the neighborhood, the impact to the traffic, the impact to parking, um, isn't as significant, so. That's just, that's just my opinion, I know the rest of you may have, may have other ideas or thoughts or comment.
Yeah, I agree with Brian about, um, the traffic and the parking situations that retail in a residential neighborhood is not uh, not ideal, put it that way. I am, um, happy that this lady, that Ms. Benton, got a, a place that she could locate her store. I wish her the, the best of luck in her new business, the most success. Uh, we, we really appreciate businesses that come to town, that especially ones that generate sales tax. And we want them to, um, be successful. Uh, I know sometimes that, uh, when people want to start a business, they have a hard time finding a location. Brandon doesn't have a lot of old buildings that are all paid off where the rent can be lower. Most of it is new construction that is still carrying a mortgage, and so the rents are higher, and the leases are longer, and I'm hoping that, that people can find locations where they can have, uh, favorable favorable rents and favorable, um, lease times. So that they can, uh, start their businesses like they want, and Brandon can continue to be successful and grow.
Okay, well, thanks, I just wanted to bring that up, so we will leave it as is and move on. Okay, Hockey Association, Patrick, page twenty-five.
Yep, so, I tried to capture most of the conversation, hopefully it's somewhat accurate to what we talked about, but it kept, it keeps the three to one and the maximum of two hundred, except the maximum number can be increased by conditional use permit. The thing to note about this language, it doesn't modify the formula, just the maximum number, so they, it'd still be the three to one. If you wanted to be able to alter the formula, or just set a number above two hundred without the formula, we can do that too, this, the way it would work is the three to one, two hu- up to two hundred, if you want more than two hundred, you're gonna have to come in, it doesn't remove the cap, there would still be the three to one cap. You could just go above the two hundred, if you wanted to, if you looked at the building, it was like, and, and it was allowed six hundred, and you were like, this building really probably shouldn't have more than four hundred, you could set the cap at four hundred. That's kind of how this is designed to work, so I am open to your thoughts, and Tom from Hockey is here as well.
So, I missed the last meeting, and I, I apologize, I haven't had time to, to review the, the video recording, but so basically, the only thing that's changed is we're allowing them to come in for a conditional use.
To go higher?
Correct. So what, what do we judge that against? So that if somebody comes in for a conditional use? You know, how do we tell one entity yes, we tell another entity no?
In my recollection, some of the discussion was about, we thought it would be hard, particularly when you talk about the institutional zone, to come up with a standard, cause there's a lot of varying uses that, or, or sizes of buildings that can be there, and so I believe it was mentioned, I don't think by me, that, you know, it could be institutional right up against a residential neighborhood, it could be more removed from residential neighborhood. And so there's some variance there in what I think would, uh, make sense, you know, we've, we've always tried to do what we can to protect residential neighborhoods, so that one stuck out to me, that that to me could be a case where I would support, even in a conditional use situation, keeping them more moderate, so.
Yes, one consideration we might take, or one thing we might take into consideration when deciding a conditional use for a bigger sign would be, I suppose, the size of the building, and also as, as a Brooke said, that how close it is to residential could be another consideration.
I, I, I can understand in, in institutional, we have multiple buildings. And, you know, I, I, I can see an exception where you, you allow, you know, up to a certain size on, on each of the buildings, but I'm, I'm still concerned about going over two hundred. Two hundred's a big sign.
It, it is, but when you're dealing with a, a large structure, you know, we were discussing, uh, an example would be the hockey arena. And the size of that, if it's, and with the conditional use, we can we can say yes or no to more specific things, so if it's something that just says ice cats, or something that is just displaying what the building is so you can see it, cause you're, you're trying to attract people in there from out of town. And it gives them an opportunity to, to put some signage up on their building that's that's not, you know, real aggressive, doesn't have lights, something like that, that just, just so you can see it. And it, it fits the size of the building a little bit more, because it is a bigger structure, so two hundred square feet is a pretty good size, but, um, when he was showing the, the size of the signs on the building itself, it it really does look small.
Yeah, I think, like on your laptop screen here, it would look like a sticky address label, would be above that proportion. It would look funny, but.
And it was pointed out by someone that, you know, the, because to me, this in institutional only, and that's what, that's where the section is at, it's in the section about institutional only, and, and there are uses in town, maybe one case in particular where something, it is an institutional, but it's something that could fit into the institutional zone, you could see one day becoming part of it in the right circumstances, or at least having an, an application to change to that, and we think that probably certainly wouldn't conform to the cer- current sign statutes, so that was something that stuck with me also.
So Patrick, on this, if, if it comes in under conditional use, so I know that hockey isn't going to light the sign on the backside by residential, but is that something that could be part of the conditional use, like you can't, I don't know, you can't light it, this one? Yeah?
Yep. So, at the last meeting, I did provide your email, Brian, to them, so they, they are aware of your comments.
So at this point, this is a discussion item?
Correct, however you want the text to be. Next step would be, once you're satisfied with text, would be public hearing, or if you wanted to stay as it is now, I guess there would be no public hearing.
Tom Gurnick, nineteen oh one, Salt Archstone, Sioux Falls. Sorry, I just got back from work, so, I'm a little dirty, so. Um, I agree with you, Brian, that how do you how do you let one go without the other? And, and I, I don't mean to be a pain, I'm not trying to make you guys rewrite this whole thing, and I apologize for my bringing it here, but the thing is, is, I'd like, we'd like to have two signs, one in the back of the building, one in the front of the building. With that, we're limited to a hundred square feet per sign, basically. If we could either get allowance to have two hundred on the back, and then two hundred, minimum two hundred on the front, I mean, that would be adequate. Um, I know Minnehaw County does it based on the size of the building. So if the, the building's a hundred and fifty square feet, or a hundred fifty linear feet, then you take that times two, and you're allowed three hundred square feet of signage. I'm not telling you how to do your job, I'm just, you know, like you say, how do you determine one without the other? That's one way that they do it. Institutional, I don't know what that all means, I'm, I'm sorry, but, yeah. And I apologize for bringing this up, making you guys do all this, but.
Oh, we've dealt with sign issues all the time, Tom, it's no big deal.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for coming all the time, we do appreciate it.
No problem.
And I do understand Brian's concern with how do you look at one versus another, and but I, I do think that institutional is such a unique zoning, there's so many different things that can go there, that like I said, if they, if they want to have a, a sign on the front and the back, which the backside, you, you could see from Highway eleven and the front side, you could see from the park, granted, if you're in the park, you should be able to find the hockey rink, but, um, but at the same time, you want to have a sign up there, you want to be proud of your building, and two one hundred square foot signs on that building are, is pretty small, so, just to have your logo up there and, and your name, um, I think and I, I, I guess I, a little bit newer to this commission, so I don't have the experience of some of the concerns that you may have, but I think with a conditional use permit, it allows us to look at opportunities where a larger sign could be permitted, but it's not, we're not saying that that's just blanket, you know, we can say no because of residential or other factors that, that we feel a bigger sign would hinder. It just gives us a little bit of opportunity to, to make it fit where it's, it's warranted, I guess.
I mean, don't, don't get me wrong, I'm, I'm in favor of this because it has to happen, you know, for example, you look at Aspen Park, if, uh, soccer or wellness goes in there, I mean, we've got, we've got signage on the water treatment plant that's in the park, we got signage on the swimming pool that's in the, all on the same, in the same property, you know, and according to our ordinance, all of those should, would be limited to the two hundred as, as cumulative total, so I, I understand that we do need to make some changes here to allow signage on individual buildings within a institutional district. Same thing can happen with schools, if you might have a, a middle school and a high school on, on the same property, or a bus barn, or a, a ball field, and they, you know, they all need their signage, and we shouldn't have to limit the entire complex to um, you know, all, all the buildings on the complex to, you know, two hundred square feet. This particular application, um, yes, I agree, it, it has multiple frontages. But I just, I just get a little nervous that all of a sudden, we got somebody coming in and wanting, you know, a six hundred square foot sign on the front of their building. How do we, how do we judge one fairly against another? If they just, oh, well, I want to exceed it, so I'm gonna go in and, and, and get an application, if we don't have any, if we don't have anything to, to base our review upon, it gets it, it gets tough, so.
Can we find out what other cities do? They go by the size of the building?
Most comparable sized cities to us in, in this area, I mean, we could look at Brookings, we could look at Vermillion, we can look at ones with actual colleges and probably bigger things, most probably are based on a street front, as Sioux Falls has probably actually looked into it more than most small towns probably have, but if you want to go back to the drawing board and I can put together some information, we certainly can, I don't know what Tom's timeline is necessarily, cause adopting an ordinance does take ninety days.
Well, aren't, aren't we gonna run into this issue with the new school, I mean, how big is the links? You know, and I, you know, so, right, I, I don't know if that's considered a sign, but.
I talked about it last time. If it's a, if it's a, something on a building intended to convey some kind of message, it's a sign.
So I don't know that we would want to lose our links because of something like this, so I would just say that that's coming up and that'll be institutional, right?
Correct, they're in the process of rezoning right now.
Technically, the, the word Brandon on the water tower is a sign.
That's what my question was, how big is the one on the water tower?
I guess, for me, one of the, and I don't know if, if you want to I don't know if this is what we want to do or not, but, uh, when I'm thinking about this, I'm thinking, okay, if we want to permit something, if it's just like a label to identify what it is, like the the Ice Cats Arena or something like that, versus like a slogan or something, I think there's a difference there, but if you're just identifying your building, I would be more apt to, to agree that that's fine than if it was some kind of advertising about, you know.
Constitutionally, we cannot look at the content of a sign to determine what, what it says, even if it's just a label versus a slogan versus anything else. A sign is a sign, we can't set different standards based on what it says, or what type of sign it is. Unfortunately, that's, that makes things difficult.
It's still like a sign that said, anyway, okay, we'll let go of that.
You know, fortunately, in the institutional, the majority of the construction is gonna be public related. A church, or a, a school, or, or government type building, so we're not dealing with a lot of private entities, so this isn't we're probably not gonna be faced with things that might be offensive to some people, um, or maybe offensive isn't the right word, but, um, you know, just an eyesore, um, you know, it, it, it's not gonna be advertising in-your-face kind of stuff, or, you know, pot plant, or, you know. Here again, you know, all of a sudden, somebody sees, you know, get your marijuana here, and it's, you know, a thousand square feet, people might, well, jeez, I don't like that, but you know, hockey, I'm okay with at a thousand square feet, so, um, kind of like selling guns versus selling clothes. Some things are offensive to people, and some things aren't, but in this, everything, like I said, everything's either public or, um, you know, government or, or school related, so we're probably not gonna see a lot of things that might be considered you know, not appropriate for some people, so.
I feel comfortable with this, the way it's written, um, I can see Brian's point about if we if we judge each application on its own merits and pass some and don't pass others, there might be a perception that we were unfair in some circumstances, and we want to avoid being unfair, but we also want to avoid the perception of being unfair, want to be as fair as we can. So I still think it might be a good idea to see how Brookings, Vermillion, Mitchell, Yankton, uh, if if other cities base it more on the size of the building, which might be something we can, uh, base our decisions on, which are more uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Less objectional, yes, more, yeah, less, less, more objective, less subjective, there you go, yeah.
I guess if, if we're changing it, I, I would like to see us change it to allow per, per, per structure on the site, you know, for like, my example of the school. You know, you got a stadium, you got a, you got a school, you- You know, for like my example of the school, you know, you got a stadium, you got a, you got a school, you might have a, a, a middle school. I think, you know, each structure on the site should be allowed to have adequate signage. So I don't think that should require somebody to, to spend money to come in here to, to get that approved, I think. You know, maybe on a, on a per, per building basis that they should have to come here.
On the hockey rink, I think, didn't we have to give them a variance to allow them X amount of frontage on that road, right?
Correct, Aspen Park Road, despite its name, is not actually a road. So they would have had zero frontage, obviously that doesn't work. So this board did grant a variance to treat Aspen Park Road as if it were a road for frontage purposes back in July of twenty twenty-three, I think.
But if we looked at either, uh, you know, size of the building or size of lot type of thing, on institutional, because those properties are going to be, you know, you have one property like As- Aspen Park where it's one property, but there's all kinds of uses and, and then they wouldn't have to come in for a variance and, and all that. We could have that tied in here too, I, I agree that could save that kind of step.
Well, technically Aspen Park does have frontage though.
Does, there, there is some along Highway eleven, there is a little bit up on the northeast corner, there's, it does have a little bit.
But not enough for the amount of signs there.
And Aspen Park is not a road because why?
It was never planted off as a road, it's basically a driveway.
I know, it's, it's probably not, uh, the right width or the, and to make it into a real road would, millions of dollars to make it into a real road. So that's probably not, not a good, sure, news, uh, not a good solution to happen right now.
Okay, so do we feel that there's enough, um, I don't know what I want to say, conditions in here with the conditional use, it's only an institutional zone. Is that enough for the commission to feel comfortable to go forward? Or is there something else that you would want Patrick to do, because we need to get moving on this?
Well, in my opinion, I think this meets with the discussion that we had at the last meeting. And so it meets with what I was thinking. So for me, this works, I understand that conditionally used brings a little bit of uncertainty, I don't know if that's the right word, but, but it's, it does give us an opportunity to hear what someone is presenting and look at the circumstances of that property and, and assess things like, even with some of the discussion that was had here with the Hockey Association. I mean, they actually were there already, but if we would have said, well, that back sign shouldn't be lighted, but they were already there. But I mean, to someone else, we could say that sign on this side is right next to residential area, that should, you know, not be a lighted sign. And so I, I think there's, you know, just with the ability to put conditions on it, as long as we're not completely arbitrary and the type of conditions we put on something, I, I think that's okay, in my opinion.
Do we want to add in something with, um, the figuring out of the building size or, or something now? Or do we want to discuss that later?
I'm okay with this as long, you know, with the conditional use thing, as long as most of us want to go with that. Out of curiosity, I still would like to know what other cities do. But, you know, if, I'd be okay with this too.
The rest of you haven't, that haven't weighed in, pro, con?
I think this is a good start. To have the signage be fair to everybody, I guess, to start it out and go from there. But I think it does need to be looked at, maybe building size more than frontage size. Because if you make a big building, you're probably going to have the frontage anyway, most likely.
Unless you're tucked into the corner of a park.
But the land's all there, technically.
Megan, are you comfortable with this?
Uh, yeah, I think with the conditional use, I mean, I'm okay with them coming in each time, giving us their thoughts on what signs they think they need and then we just go case by case, I think that works with me.
Brian, is there something additional you'd like Patrick to work on, on this one?
Do you need a motion or something from us then, or what?
Not necessarily a motion, I just, you know, maybe not a motion, just a general consensus if you are generally ready to have this be a public hearing, I don't. Not necessarily that you disagree or agree, but that you think it's really discussed at that level.
How, how fast do we need to move this for hockey? Obviously, they're the ones that brought it to the table here.
We, we're not going to be moving until the first part of the year, but we do have a, um, temporary one now, but I just need to know so I can order the sign. I don't want to order four signs and then throw two of them away and, you know, they cost money. So I'm just trying to get everything in, that's the role first before, so we do have some time, but, yeah.
I guess if there's something specific you want to add, if you can get that to Patrick or, you know, whatever you're thinking, so we can keep this moving along.
Yeah, my only concern, as I, I mentioned before, would be if we're going to be modifying it. You know, I, I think of some, some applications where, you know, schools, um, Aspen Park. My understanding, the way our ordinance is written, that two hundred square feet is the total cumulative that, of signage on all structures on the property. So the hockey, you know, the hockey wants some area, the, the wa- the water treatment plant, the swimming pool, the concession stand, you know, do we, do we, do they have to come in every time they want to put a sign up moving forward? I don't think we do. You know, as the new school going, and they might, they might have two buildings, they might have multiple entrances that are regen- going to require some type of signage as well. Do we, do we need to have them come in every time? I, I would like to include something that says, you know, any, like, any individual sign can't exceed, exceeding two hundred square feet comes here.
Yeah, and, you know, we, Barb mentioned the links, the picture, the links, like on the high school, that would count as signage. Well, how about if the church has a big old cross coming out off the roof? Does that count to? Every, a lot of stuff would be out of, uh, again, what's the word I'm looking for, out of compliance under this, under the way it's written right now.
So, okay, I'm gonna, just thinking through this, uh, on the fly as we're going through it, I, I mean, I just, yes, I, because if you think about the example that we're talking about here with hockey, we've, they have already come for a variance. We granted that, it obviously provided them with some opportunity because, like I said, by the strict street frontage, the whole park would have very little signage, so. But I think with, with the size of the building with the hockey, the example is that even with that variance that we allowed, they pretty quickly came to the maximum of two hundred feet. And so I'm backtracking a little bit because now I'm thinking, yeah, we don't necessarily, I, I'm not trying to cause people to come in for a variance and then come in again for a conditional use. So I'm starting to rethink this a little bit and think that, yes, maybe there is a better way to do this. Still kind of thinking strictly about the institutional zone for myself, but.
Is this something we want to think about for two weeks whenever first meeting in October is? Does he just want to stew on and think on before we try to push it forward some more?
Well, is there something to address Brian's concern about separate buildings? Is there something that we can write that would deal with that?
We can write whatever you want.
I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know.
Or, or the part about what Br- what Brooks just said about, you know, each sign or whoever said it, the part about each sign being the size instead of cumulative.
But, you know, to Brooks' point too, um, under the ordinance, they still have to have frontage to get the calculation under this. So if you're in a place that doesn't have enough frontage, which institutional could be lots of places that don't have frontage, we're requiring them to get a variance first for the frontage and then do the calculation and then they have to come in for a conditional use. I do agree that, um, there's got to be a better way because that's, that's a lot of work for, for a nonprofit just to put up a sign, um, that's some pretty good fees before they even get started. And they have to keep coming to meetings very patiently.
No problem, um, what if we could do like two hundred max on one side of the maximum of two signs per building? So we could have one on the front and one on the back, two hundred per sign? Because that would work for us, I guess. I'm not, like I said, I'm not trying to tell you what to do, but just trying to be helpful, thank you.
Am I right, right now, we don't really have anything which limits the number of signs necessarily for this, I don't think?
Correct, there is no limit on number, you could have two hundred one square foot signs.
Don't laugh if you put up a bus barn and you got thirty garage stalls, each one has a sign on it.
And I, not to complicate things, but I do think, I, I think there should be something with the building, because not every building is going to need two, two hundred square foot signs, you know? So if you have a twenty by twenty building, that would be excessive. So there needs to be a calculation there, um, to limit things a little bit too. But, uh, I, yeah, I, I think institutional is going to have the most complexities because of the most uses that would want signs, I think, so. But I do think that requiring them to first come in for a variance and come back for a conditional use permit, um, that does get to be a lot much.
Is there anything for the difference between signs on the building and signs that go above the building? Are there different sizes and ordinances for the two different kinds?
So we do section, so A here is wall, roof and projecting, so attached to the wall, five feet above the roof line or projecting out, but attached to the building. There's also freestanding signs, which coming up from the ground, a monument sign. So that is B, that is not shown on here, there, there wasn't a proposed change to B. But yes, those are two different numbers.
So would we rather have it, the calculation based on the street frontage or on the side of, size of the building? Is that what Mike is saying?
Just looking at the ordinance, we require a minimum one acre for institutional. So, you know, Michael says, you know, that's, that's forty-three, forty-three, forty-four thousand square feet. You know, that's a, that's going to be two hundred feet by two hundred feet. Almost every one of these app instances is going to get to that maximum allowable signage size, so.
Does every building in institutional have to have an acre though? Or can there be a smaller building on the same parcel, right? Because it's not really like the.
Fifteen three ten says minimum lot area is one acre.
Yeah, you, you'd have one acre, but like Aspen Park has, you have the pool, you have the ball diamonds, you have the go cards. Are those all on separate parcels? Right, so.
That's what I'm saying, according to our ordinance, all of those buildings would be limited to two hundred square feet of signage, total signage, which just isn't realistic. You know, just like the high school, you know, has the, has the ball field on it. It used to have a high school and a, a middle school on it. But there's diff- you know, there's the performing arts center signage, there's a signage on the back, there's a signage on the front.
The library.
The library, yeah, I mean, there's just, there's signs all over it, so.
Football field and the concession stand.
It's no surprise to me that Brian is really smart, because I've been on this commission with him for a long time, but I'm starting to kind of venture toward, I, I believe that was your idea that you spoke of saying two hundred feet, square feet per sign in the institutional zone. Especially with what we just mentioned, that the minimum lot size is going to be an acre, almost forty-four thousand square feet, so. That's making more and more sense to me every minute.
The one acre minimum lot area institutional might be something we want to revisit, because we do have pocket parks that I imagine are probably less than an acre. So that might be something that we add to our list of many things to discuss.
Well, and we have to remember that this institutional is relatively new, we haven't had it very long. So, you know, there's always cleanup on these things as we go along, so. Okay, so I'm trying to wrap this up here and move along. So what would we like Patrick to do?
Would it help to have one more discussion where we have both this example and I try to find an example based off building size? That way we have two to look at and try to compare and contrast, would that be a good place to start?
And I, I, I don't think that A necessarily needs to be removed. I think if, if there was a lot that had street frontage and if that fit and they just needed to come in for a conditional use for something, I, maybe that one can stay there. But also for s- the complexity of institutional that we're discussing here, there needs to be something else that doesn't deal with frontage, that deals with the building size, maybe, you know, no more than fifteen percent of the building or something, I don't know what the number is, but something that maybe deals with the, the size of the, the face of the building where they're going to put the sign. So if you have a building that's ten feet tall and twenty feet long, you don't have a two hundred foot sign, so it's just all sign. But, um, so maybe something that is a percentage of the face of the building they're going to put it on, something that's. Um, so maybe something that is a percentage of the face of the building they're gonna put it on, something that's a total square footage of the building. I, I don't wanna get too complicated, but yet it's a complicated district, so I don't think we'd be too simple, simplified either.
And maybe just check a couple of places as to Alyssa's um, curiosity, you know, Vermillion, Yankton. If I recall correctly, we're way ahead in most of these places, so I don't think. Yeah, well, Sioux Falls, we try to, we try to mirror, you know, same sized cities because, you know, we just don't have the. Capacity to do what Sioux Falls does, but if there's something out there, but. I'm gonna be skeptical that there is. I don't even know if they have institutional districts. We'll see, but a couple, maybe, would that be fair?
Yeah, I would think Brookings and Vermillion would probably have something in place because of the universities that they have on, you know, within their boundaries.
Is that enough for you, Patrick, to go on?
Yep.
Thank you. Good discussion. Okay, let's go cow between signs and fences. Oh my gosh. Okay, fence, fences.
Um, so this is one that I would like to bring forward for a discussion item. Um, if you look on page twenty-six, Patrick wrote out what our language states right now about fences and how they can be placed in easements. Um, the highlighted area that says no fence allowed and a drainage easement if the cumulative width of the easement is greater than twenty feet. I feel like that's a little too restrictive and I'd like to just omit that language from our ordinances. Um, and the reason being is most of the time that easement is half on one property and half on the other property. And when they're this large, it tends to be in those industrial parks. Well, then they're not allowed to put up a fence kind of right down the middle, right along their property line to split the two properties. And so nobody's really complained about this yet that I know of. But I do have a couple drainage issues in an industrial park. And I am talking to the landowners and we haven't discussed the fence that goes right down the middle of it. But I feel very restricted on how I'm going to fix that issue because of this ordinance. I would like more than a twenty foot easement there, but then they would have to remove that fence. And I know they're not gonna be okay with that because it's a very tall fence with barbed wire on top of it. They need it to keep their site secure, so. The only alternative would be to put a pipe underneath of it, which is gonna involve a lot more storm sewer and be a lot more expensive for the city. It's always cheaper if we can surface flow it, but not gonna be able to do that with our current ordinance. And I'm not saying we can't do something else, but I just don't understand where the twenty feet comes from. The fence still has to stay ninety percent open, so like a chain link fence, or it has to have a two inch gap at the bottom, so it doesn't impede flow. And it still has to provide access, so whether it's a gate or, you know, access into a parking lot or something.
To me, it seems like it was probably put there because a twenty foot drainage would probably have a lot of volume. Would this be something where you would wanna look at it and say? Volume isn't an issue there, or does there need to be, does it need to be there, but a way out for you, or?
So when you read the language, it does say any fence placed within an easement that impedes the access or intended use of the easement. I feel like if we do have a problem with one of the drainage easements and it does impede the flow, then we have the right to come in and tell them to remove it or remove it ourselves. So I do think we're covered there, where if there was an area that we didn't want them to have a fence, city staff could tell them that it just has to go.
So to say it real simply, you feel like the remaining elements of this would still cover the city and, yep. I guess my, my concern is though, if we allow somebody to put a fence there and then a year later we get a rain and it's. Impeding the drainage and then we're like, oh, now you gotta take it out, you know, I guess is, is my hesitation, I don't wanna incur a bunch of expense to somebody that.
So we have had that on like a sanitary sewer easement where we've had to do maintenance work on the sewer main. And we've removed the fence to do that work and it is on to the property owner to either replace it or not. So we have had instances where we've done that and when they get a permit, there is a note in there that states that the city may have to remove it. And it would be at the owner's expense to replace it.
As long as everybody understands the situation that, that's just my, my concern is if there, if someone's told it's okay to do something and then. They're told, now remove it, but as long as everyone's provided the information.
And I can think of a couple homeowners that wanted to put up a fence or they wanted to put up a wood privacy fence, you know, and they're okay with that two inch gap. But I know on the west side of town, they've done that in their backyards and their fence stays wet all the time. And so it's growing algae and it's rotting and then they're mad at us because we allowed them to put up that type of fence in a drainage way. So we're pretty particular now on when they wanna do it and how they're going to build them.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we, we have them documented. Sometimes it's a formal letter, a note to the file. So there's documentation, we spoke to them, they've agreed to it, it's, it's an email, a letter or something, so. It is the owner's expense to put it back up. Hard part's when a new owner comes in and they're not aware of that prior knowledge.
Is two inches enough?
Yeah, I think that kinda depends on where it's at.
I was gonna say, cause there's sod there and not really much.
Right.
Or weeds or whatever it might be.
You can see where somebody wants one to keep their dog inside their fence too, and if you do too much, then their dog's gonna go underneath the fence.
Yeah, cause two inches above the ground, if they don't mow it.
Right.
You basically have nothing. You know, it's still gonna, it's still gonna trap leaves and.
Yeah, I like the ninety percent open. A chain link fence in a drainage area is a much nicer compromise.
So this is a discussion item. What sort of action do we need to take if anything?
If you would like the last sentence removed, we would need to schedule a public hearing to amend this section with the last sentence removed.
Are there a lot of twenty foot drainage easements in residential? Is that mostly commercial?
It's mostly commercial. I can think of one that's in a residential area and. You know, I think a lot more of that is just because we have other easements within the drainage easement. And so we wanna be able to have a maintenance bench along the side of it so we can access it with trucks.
Cause commercials gonna have less turnover and things like that. Residential, people buy houses and there's lots of things that they don't know, so. My opinion, I'd like to honor the well fed out request by the city engineer and pursue this.
Just, just to confirm what I heard, thought I heard you say, if we strike this sentence, this last sentence that is highlighted in yellow. You think the remainder of the language here will um, is good? And that the uh, the uh, the yellow highlighted part is. It, it won't, it doesn't change what, what's left. It's still, the, what's left is still good. What's there is still good.
Correct.
Then I'd be okay with it too.
If, if that part is. Um, if we strike that, they, they do still, the homers or the owners of the property would still have to sign something. Acknowledging that it's a drainage and if the fence is removed, it's at their cost and things like that.
Yes, yep. Every time there's an easement.
But I'm, I think I'm fine with that.
Okay, so then the consensus is to move forward with that change? Is that what we're getting? Okay. All right, uh, drive through facilities on page twenty. What do you got going on there, Patrick?
All right, so we talked about a lot of things. We talked about trying to figure out how to set various stacking lane numbers. The problem is you have different types of businesses with drive-throughs. You, you have a bank, you have a car wash, you have. Big coffee house, you have McDonald's, you have quite, they're each somewhat different. So how to work around that, you know, setting a number at three might work for some, it might cause problems for others, it might just be unnecessary, so. We kind of already had that requirement. If you wanted to have a drive-up window in neighborhood business as a conditional use. The proposed language in front of you adds drive-through service window as a conditional use in the three. It, it cleans up the language so they all match and then it adds it as a conditional use, sets some minimums with the one that you can alter being. The default is three spa, three, it's D on page twenty-eight. Provide three stacking lanes. But you can amend that up or down by conditional use permit. It's not necessarily a minimum, it can go either way. The rest of them are minimums that. Shall be located in such a manner that a vehicle using or waiting to use those facilities don't interfere with vehicles trying to leave. Crosswalk striping, the length of stacking spaces. Distance from intersections being not just a, you take, you know, as the crow flies, but actual driving distance measurements, cause. As the crow flies could tuck you back in there very far. So stuff like that, some definitions, not, not perfect, cause we'll have to distinguish between drive-through windows versus. The service board or kiosk and that kinda thing. I imagine you would probably want the measurements from the. The board, maybe not necessarily the window. So we'll, wanna make sure the language reflects that accurately. This is more just kind of a. A shot at it to continue the discussion. See what you like, what you don't, what should be changed. Maybe it's completely in left field.
I have a question on F, um, the hundred and fifty feet from the. Entrance and exits of stacking lanes.
Maybe the exit isn't a huge.
Yeah, that the exit side, I kinda raised a question. I don't know if we need, need to be concerned about the exit side of it. Um, but how do we, how do we define the entrance to the stacking lanes? Is that? Is that the beginning of the, the third stacking space? Is that? How do you, how do you determine where the entrance starts?
Yep, so right now probably it would be. Since, since all stacking lanes are required to be clearly identified through striping, landscaping, pavement, designer signage, it would probably be where that begins. Wherever you set the number at. If you set it at three, I mean, it could conceptually be a longer entrance than just the three.
Cause that, that's gonna get to be a pretty substantial di- distance, um, cause if you've got three twenty foot. Stacking spaces, that's sixty feet right there, plus an additional hundred and fifty feet. That's, that's two hundred and ten feet from. The kiosk and or the, the, the window.
Yep.
Um, I don't think a lot of facilities are going to, are gonna meet that.
Yep, and that was a kind of a placeholder.
Sure.
It originally started at three hundred and even, I looked at that and I was like, eh, that's a lot of room. Cause if you look at, you know, what was the Brandon Pharmacy's window that is, you know, I did the whole calculation from the street up, you know, you measure, then you measure over and you measure up. That was right about the one fifty number.
The other one that we may run into some issues is um, that, uh, I can't remember which one it was, let me find it here. I think it was against residential. Fifty feet.
So this is C on page twenty-eight.
Yeah. You know, so I'm thinking of like um. What is it? B, B and G. Yeah, I mean, they're right, they're right up against it, so. I, 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 on one hand, I can understand it because cars are gonna be sitting there idling. But yet is it, is it a lot diff, is it really a whole lot different than a parking lot? You know, and how far we, we allow parking lots to be from a residential district. So those are kinda my, my two biggest ones.
The one doesn't really evolve the driving, it's more the speaker, I. The last part may be required. Who is the may be required? Who requires it or who decides that?
That would be probably you all by a conditional use permit.
Should it say maybe required like on? Uh, like D, this number may be amended by the term, I mean, something to that point, so it has a conditional use behind that, so people. I mean, so if someone comes in, they know they have to maybe come in for a conditional use on that. I think this, this whole section is gonna, is gonna be a conditional use, right? These are guidelines or minimums for the conditional use, so.
Correct. The uses adds, if you wanna drive through window, you have to get a conditional use permit. That's what the use section where it adds the three, that adds it to conditional use in, and BGB and CB. And whether that's the way to go, I don't know. It's, it's hard when each individual type of thing requires something different. And some obviously probably wouldn't need to, others, if you have. A national coffee chain on a main road, maybe you would want to take a look at the number, I don't know.
I like, I like the three st, I like the three stalls, I think that's appropriate. One thing we may wanna clarify is instances where they might have two lanes. Like say Dairy Queen, they have two lanes that you order from. Do we require three in each of those lanes? You know, even though they're going up to one pickup window, that might be something we need to, to define. Does this, does this apply to both of those lanes? Three stacking spots in front of the order, order kiosk? Or can you have two in one and one in the other and that, and that meets the three? Just to say, Paul, some headaches down the road.
Do you have a preference? We can write it however you want.
I guess in my mind, if they're gonna have two order kiosks, it should. They're, they're anticipating enough load that each one should have three in my mind. I've, I've seen several times where there's three in each lane at Dairy Queen. I know there's some, some Burger Kings and McDonald's, you know, during rush hour, they've. They've all got at least three on theirs.
Well, and the reason we're talking about this is so they don't block the street or the sidewalk and so if you have.
Block parking lots and.
Three and, three, three and then another three beside it, they're not flowing back. Since our last meeting where we first talked about this, I saw. On two occasions, there were seven cars lined up at the pharmacy, at the Lewis Pharmacy. Seven in a row and I'm, and that was only cause I happened to be there and I saw them, so I'm sure it happens more often than that. So that, that, you know, it, it does happen. Nobody was blocking the street or the entrance or sidewalk or anything. But um, I know that it can happen easily.
They have more space than most, you know, so, yeah.
Any other comments you want me to? Any other comments you want me to incorporate into a next draft? This isn't like something we have to do tomorrow, but it's something we should probably eventually have, so. If you have any comments even beyond today's meeting, if you wanna email them over to me, we can try to work through it.
I think it looks pretty good for a first draft, Patrick.
Okay, item eleven, page thirty. What do we got here, Patrick?
So we have talked about housing and that housing discussion we're going to have. I've been trying to find a meeting where we haven't had, you know, four other discussion items, cause I don't want you to be here all night. You know, you worked all day, you probably wanna get to sleep at some point. But, so this is somewhat of an immediate need for an actual project, so it's not necessarily the full change we have to do, but this is kind of a Band-Aid. In the meantime, in the R two district, we allow bu- as a permitted use, single family attached dwelling up to four, and we have single family attached dwelling up to four individually platted lots surrounded by commonly owned space. If you go to the conditional uses, we just have single family attached up to eight individually platted lots. We do not have an option to have individual lots where they own the space in front and in back and potentially on the side. So we do have a project that is looking to, they will build it all together as one, so it would fall under the commonly owned space thing, but then they plan to subdivide off into units and our language right now would prevent a replat because it would create non-conformities and the uses as a result would be non-conforming or we couldn't even. So this use is added in there to allow them to proceed on their project that they want to do pretty quickly.
Didn't, didn't we fix that somehow with those, those brick places, you know?
Plan development.
Is that what we did? Okay.
And this is kind of a, it's a Band-Aid that I'm sure we'll probably end up rewriting it when we go through the residential. But this is just kinda to help them get started and hopefully they can get their foundations and stuff in before the end of the year. Or before everything freezes up and that's the end for the year.
So what do you need us to do on this then?
Is this acceptable to schedule as a public hearing? It would probably be the second meeting in October, just the way publications work. Are we okay to proceed with this to allow them to kinda have the groundwork for what they wanna do?
I'm, I'm okay with it. I, I think it was just kind of an oversight when we were doing those revisions.
So consensus, go ahead. Go for it.
Yes. The, um, you would need a conditional use permit though, right? For up to eight units, is that right?
Correct.
And currently we allow up to four, then we're changing it up to eight. That's what we're changing, right?
Four, you could do with just as by right.
Right.
But if you wanted to go five to eight, yes, you would need a conditional use permit. But right now you could only do that if you, like, they collectively own the commonly owned space around them. This one wants to subdivide itself a lot.
Yep, yep. Yeah, you could only have, it'd be a multi-family up to eight instead of a single family. And we're just, that's the only thing we're changing, right?
Yeah, basically, yes.
I know that's what you said. I just, sometimes I have to say things more than once just to make sure I'm on the right page.
Okay, seems like we can schedule that for a public hearing. For a short meeting.
If anyone's made it to the end of the meeting on YouTube, I think Hockey's still looking for a building sponsor, so if you have a business that would like to be donate or featured to, on Hockey's stuff, I mean, I'm sure they would love to hear from you. So, yeah, feel free to reach out to Hockey. They would love to hear from you and discuss their project, if you're still listening.
On a big sign. All right, do we have any, uh, more business?
Can I ask one quick question? What, what is, uh, what is the status on the comp plan thing?
Yep, so I, I'm trying to figure out a meeting where we can work through it without you all being here till ten o'clock at night. I'm hoping once things start to get a little cold out there, that we'll have actual time to sit through and work on it, rather than discuss, you know, five things first and then it's eight thirty and then oh, we're on the comp plan now for an hour, so. I am hoping to get it on there once we have an agenda that's affords the time.
So the, the second meeting in December, the one that's close, closest to Christmas then?
Hopefully before then. I mean, for the builders, I imagine they would prefer that we get no snow and they just keep rolling, but yeah, when it starts to get cold, we should probably have some time.
Good question. All right. Is there, um, a motion to adjourn?
Tote's moved.
Alyssa says second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thanks everyone for their.
We are adjourned at seven forty-five.
Patrick, thanks for all your work on all this stuff.